Future meetings for the town of Emmensburg, we had Park and Recreation Committee meeting on November the 18th at 7:00 PM here at the town office. We also have Citizens Advisory Committee meeting on November the 20th at 7:00 PM also here in the town office. Planning Commission meeting will be on November 24th at 7:00 PM, town office and on Zoom. Town's Christmas tree lighting will be on Monday, December the 1st at 6:00 PM here in front of this building. And the Board of County Commissioners or the Board, the town commissioners will meet on Tuesday, December the 2nd at 7:00 PM here in the town office and on Zoom.
I have one additional.
Yes ma'am.
It's the Green Team meeting is November 20th at 3:00 PM here at the town office and Zoom as well.
At 3:00 PM.
3:00 PM, yes.
Thank you.
And this is an official meeting, but tomorrow night I'll be holding the annual meeting with the nonprofits and church groups. Talk about next year's activities at 6:30 here, yes.
Thank you. All right, our first agenda item here for meeting approval of the meeting minutes for the October 6th meeting, we have a motion to accept the minutes.
Motion to accept.
Second. Motion, we have a second, we have any discussion on the meeting, on the meeting minutes?
Yeah, I have a couple. This is for October 6th.
Yes.
At the top, just delete the word workshop. And then at the bottom of the second page, it says Commissioner Turnquist's motion to approve Commissioner Turnquist as liaison for the CAC. I think it may have been Commissioner Ben Benji that you, so you made the nomination, so you motioned.
Correct.
So if we could change that. And let me see, and that's it.
Any additional changes, discussion on the motion?
That was just for October 6th, correct?
Correct.
I'm good.
Motion to accept the changes. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have the police report.
Mrs. Willetts, do we need to approve the minutes from October 20th?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening, still myself and Deputy Bartholomew. We use five annual days leave, three and a half, six days. I handled Halloween, everything went well. I don't think I had one call for service. It was a fun night. We both attended in-service, did police one training online. We handled 157 calls for service. We had four total arrests, 66 traffic stops. And then attached is the yearly stat sheet. Any questions for me?
I do not. I have one quick question. Is there a way that we can obtain the number of calls that the residents have handled and the number of calls that have come from when you guys are off that are handled?
This number is just us, but I'm sure we can get what.
Could you get that for the next meeting or two?
Sure.
Appreciate it.
I just want to thank you for the extra traffic patrols. You can see those numbers have gone way up.
Yeah.
And it looks like it's making a difference in town, so thank you so much for that.
Any additional questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't have any agenda.
No, 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 we just, yeah, October 6th, we just did the changes, not the minutes.
We did.
You have October 20th workshop minutes that have to be approved. On page six.
All right. All right, we have another set of meeting minutes, sorry. October 20th, do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
So move.
There are seconds.
Second.
Any discussion on those minutes?
I have one change. It's in the last paragraph. Mayor Davis suggested to the board if they would be able to send town staff any questions or comments regarding the rough draft of guidelines he created. He didn't actually create any guidelines. There were guidelines handed out by Mrs. Fowler for the council to consider. Or if he did create guidelines, I don't think we saw them.
He didn't present any, but he was talking, he talked about it, said that he did create, that he was going to bring it at the December meeting.
Right, so we would need to correct that statement.
Just take out "he created."
Fine with me.
All right.
Is that good?
Yep.
Motion to do so.
Second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is approved as a minute. Let me move over here again. Mr. Slone, town manager report? Any highlights or comments?
Just, let me see, streets, the staff cleaned out storm drain inlets on the east side of Federal Avenue and East North Avenue. We assisted with the final farmer's market in the parks related to wastewater. We treated roughly 17.13% of wastewater for wild water in the month of September. There are no spills. We did not exceed the plant design capacity. We had a surplus of seven inches of precipitation. At the time of the report, Rainbow Lake was .2 feet below the spillway level, which meant it was at 16.4 feet. Water production, the amount of backwash water in September was 15.48%. Trash pickup will remain Mondays during the month of November. And then on page 12, just a few noteworthy things, we fixed a water lake on 51 DePaul Street. Staff worked on repairs and maintenance of the community center building here to prepare for the State of the County address on October 27th. MDE conducted two inspections, one at the wells, one at the wastewater treatment plant. That's pretty much it, noteworthy.
All right, thank you. Any comments, questions about?
Kathy, do we have a date for the, oh, sorry. Do we have a date for the hydrant flush since we didn't do it the other time or last week?
We met with the mayor and our superintendent and we're going to shoot for two days next week.
Yeah, the 11th and 12th, okay, thank you. Grant, anything for the grant administrator's report or highlights or?
Yeah, she sent me a quick highlight. I'll just read what she sent me. This is the report as of October 27th. She has 14 active grants. Five grants awaiting for an award or denial, three completed and one newly awarded. The newly awarded MDE loan, one is loan funding for the North Seaton Avenue water line, a replacement project to cover the project's shortfalls. Clarifier. The contractor is, the construction deadline is November 14th. You do have a change order in front of you tonight for the clarifier as well as, we're going to have some additional ones that may stem over to December, so we're not making the construction deadline of November 14th through default of the contractor. The DePaul Street water line, we did a final punch list walkthrough with contractor on October 23rd. And they should be on site this week and next for the final restoration work. We had a punch lifts about 30 different, 30 different items for them. Creamery Road pump station, which I'll go over under admin business. And then there's two upcoming grants were eligible to apply for. One would be due November 10th and that's in regards to the community garden. If need be, and then the other is due December 5th and it's for insulation and a new heating and cooling system at the water plant. Those were her noteworthy things.
Thank you.
The grant, you do intend to request the grant for the garden?
I am waiting to hear what happens tonight.
Okay.
Before we move forward. There is a November 10th deadline, so if we don't meet the deadline, then we forego any money for another year and it is a grant that has no cash match. So the town doesn't have to contribute, but we have not, we have not submitted anything as of yet.
Okay.
Kathy, that amount of the cash for us to match is approximately $1,500?
It was for the one that was submitted last year and the $1,500 was in-kind, so that's staff time to manage and prepare the grant.
Okay.
Yep.
But this year you have no match.
There will probably be still an in-kind match, but they require a small percentage of in-kind.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anything for code enforcement or? Town operations specialist report, anything there?
She's working with the mayor on the meeting tomorrow night with the nonprofits and the meal planning. She's already started, she did the, all the breast cancer. Oh, I drew a blank, all the fundraising for the, for the breast cancer, working on the time capsule still. And working with Jess on the upcoming Turkey Trot on Thanksgiving morning, if anybody's interested. And then working for the Carriage House on their Christmas event as well.
Can you explain the third bullet? Timmetsburg Welcome Center slash Visitor Center slash Museum at 22 East Main Street.
Okay, this is part of the mayor's vision and staff's vision to utilize 22 East Main Street to its fullest potential. The idea is to create possibly a welcome center or visitor center inside of the upper level of 22 East Main Street with a lot of the historical collections that we've received, including a grandfather clock and other items that people then would be able to go in and look at. Town of Thurmont has one. I don't know about 20town, but that's the vision.
Would that be manned by an additional staff personnel or?
No.
Be, okay.
No, we'll, we'd be looking for volunteers to staff that. And the reasoning for this is we are talking about vacant properties on Main Street. And we have one, we use that building 12 hours a year, so basically it's a vacant building. And there had always been talk of moving the town elections to this building. And then we could do something with that, that building up there. And make it, give the businesses a chance to advertise and to show off a lot of our history.
All right, next we have town planners report.
Good evening, this is the town planners report. I've listed the few permit applications that were processed during the month of October. Federal Stone had their grant opening on October 12th, which was a really nice event. Emmett Ridge's improvement plans were reviewed by the planning commission and it'll also be reviewed again in November. Revealed, they're awaiting their fee in lieu and their long-term forest conservation protection agreement. And for glow fiber, we updated, well, they updated their plans for their right-of-way encroachment application and a permit has been issued. I also want to highlight that the MS4 report was submitted on October 27th. The Board of Appeals met on October 15th to approve a special exception request for student housing at 101 West Main Street. And the rental registration ordinance was, or the notification materials were prepared and for newsletters and the website. And I've included the meetings that I attended during the month of October.
Thank you.
Did you say the website is available for the rental registration? It's online now?
Yeah, we created a webpage with information, yeah.
And I realized when I was looking at this report today that it says permits and code enforcement, but we really don't talk about code enforcement. So would it be possible to start including like citations or enforcements that have happened around town? And it would be nice to have a summary of rental registration applications that have been submitted.
So that can be added to. That will fall under your parking code enforcement officer, so then we can add that to his report. That would be great, thank you.
Next we have commissioner comments. Commissioner Hagan?
I just want to say, I know a lot of residents were concerned about the water address, but I wanted to take a minute to thank and congratulate the staff on the response and the hard work they did to get the water up as fast as possible. And to keep notifications on, you know, all the, they use different streams to keep the town notified of what was going on, so it's, the hard work's appreciated.
I wanted to share that the Citizens Advisory Committee met on October 14th. We had a discussion about the community garden. We discussed proposed guidelines based on best practices from other municipalities. And we created a draft and submitted that to the town council as suggested guidelines. And then the CAC had a proposal for a pollinator garden along South Seaton, and that was approved by a quorum at our meeting. We also discussed the speeding of traffic on Main Street as being an issue, but we'll continue that discussion at our next meeting. Which is November 20th at 7:00 PM. So that's all it had.
Okay, Commissioner Sweeney?
I just want to thank the town and staff and all the organizations who helped with Halloween. It went off pretty well. And everyone had a good time and there was no incidents according to a police officer's report. Thank God. But thanks to everyone, we can't, we couldn't do it without everybody working together.
Thank you.
I want to thank the staff for the, the effort, the time. I know people came in on off time, where they weren't supposed to work, but came in and manned the phones. The people that worked late, well, into the night to fix the water lines greatly appreciated. My other comment is, deals with the federal government and SNAP. With that not being approved and there's limited money that, so they say the president can use for SNAP. I personally am going to donate money to the food bank in the amount of $50. And if I need to give more, I will. And I'm challenging the other board members to match me or do the same. Just my opinion.
Thank you. I have no additional comments on, I think all they made about the water.
I just have one. The Food Lines Club is getting a set of food boxes out for the food bank.
Okay.
For, they're getting ready, they're working on them now, so they'll be going out for November and December.
Good.
We might have to keep them out longer than that.
Sure, I'm still going to donate money.
Yeah, but we're working on, with Jubilee and the Dollar Store, it'll be bags, $10 bags you can, you can purchase and, and for the food bank.
Thanks.
Somebody mentioned to me today about the food bank hours. Does anyone know how often they're opened?
I think it's Tuesdays.
I don't know.
About could we possibly increase the hours of the food bank? And I don't know how that would be handled, or they run on volunteers, how is it managed?
They run on volunteers and the problem is staffing. You know, when I talked to him, I guess, a year ago, discussed it, but it's a staffing issue more than anything else.
Mr. Mayor, you have any comments?
Yeah, just a couple. Wednesday night, I'll be hosting a town hall meeting that will be solely for the purpose of the water issue that we had last week. And I'm going to try to take the time to explain to our citizens how the water system works, where the water comes from, how it gets to town. What happens when there is a break. And I'm also going to try to put together a program here right after the holidays to educate our citizens on how to be prepared to take care of themselves for a short amount of time. Every, every form of government has set a, a three-day, 72-hour timeframe that you could expect to be on your own. We hope to do better than that here and I think we, we did last Thursday. But it was kind of eye-opening to see how lost some people were when they lost an essential service. And from the point is they didn't even know how a toilet flushed. And that's kind of eye-opening to me. So we're, we're going to do some training with our citizens and have them prepared. If, I hate to see what would happen if it'd be a major snowstorm or we'd lose water for four or five days if we'd have a catastrophic failure at the water plant itself and what we would do. And I do want to thank the staff. A project we've been working on was to develop an emergency operations plan for this exact event. And we had, did have the draft. We were planning on, meeting on Wednesday to review the draft. And with that being the only thing we had, we pulled it off the shelf and we used that draft, so it was kind of a good drill. And we found some shortfalls. We found a lot of things that were good, so we're going to be addressing those tomorrow. We're going to be meeting all morning tomorrow with all the staff to continue to develop that plan and to be, be ready if this happens again. But like I say, the community has to be prepared to be on their own for a little bit. We'll, we'll be there, we'll be there as much as we can. But you know, you gotta be able to think out of the box and we're going to try to help and educate them to be able to do that, so that's all I got.
Thank you. Bring, that brings us into public comments. And first I have on my list here, Mr. Sloan, Eric Sloan.
Eric Sloan, I live here in town and all you really have to say is like, with the grants, is there any way we can publish the quid pro quos that go along with the grant? When we get one, just a note on the, the page that you can, you can pull up and say grants, you know, what the grant is for, you know, and then what the entity that's giving us the grant expects out of us. You know, sometimes it's just like, you know, hire union people so on and so forth for specific jobs and other times it's a, we give you this money, you have to do this for us in the future. And it's just so that we know what we're getting into because, you know, 10 years down the line, when you all have gone off to somewhere else and the people that live here are going like, why do we have to do this? Well, you borrowed money from somebody and they said, this is what you're going to owe them. That's pretty much it, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next I have on the list here is Mr. Mike Myers. Yes, sir.
I'm glad you showed up.
Thank you. Next I have Deb Visasper from library. Push the button there.
All right, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I kind of wanted to come give an update of how the library is doing. It's been over a year since I've been the manager of this library, which was our first manager in many years at this library dedicated to this community. So I've really enjoyed connecting with the mayor and with the staff here at the town on getting our processes in order and increasing communication. So thank you very much for that. First of all, I want to share some resources for you. I didn't know if maybe you knew this or if our citizens knew this, but the libraries now carry a Maryland State Park passport that you can check out for one week and then visit any of the state parks in Maryland at no charge. So that's just one of the things that we added this spring and summer to our library lineup. Speaking of spring and summer, I did hear a lot of talk about the community garden, so I wanted to give a quick report on our collaboration in the community garden. From April till the end of August, we held programs there for all ages, children's, teens and adults. During that time period, we had over 245 impressions. And what I say in impressions is that our total attendance to those programs in the garden. 204 were for our children who are elementary age down to birth and their families. 14 of those were teens. That number is actually higher, but there was another program that was connected to it that we didn't count for this, for the garden program. And our adults, we had 27 impressions in our adult programs. And a lot of that is due to community volunteers coming and doing programs on pollinators, using herbs that you would grow in your garden, in your culinary pursuits, as well as learning how to can what you've grown. So that was really great. We also added a seed library downstairs where you can check out seeds. Basically, we provided seeds for those who are either gardening at home or in the community garden through donations in the community. And we have a grow cart, so we will start growing again in the winter in preparation for our gardening programs that will start in the spring. This year, we were able to distribute summer lunches for our communities, something that we all know has been much needed in here for a very long time. We worked with a program called Helping Hands and Carrying Hearts. And we distributed 151 summer lunches from June 17th to August 14th. I see that the Seaton Center is not talking tonight, but I also wanted to let you know that it was a second location. So on top of our 151 that went out at the library, there were all of the ones that were at the Seaton Center. So we made a, a pretty good impact on our community this summer with lunches. We continue to be connected in our schools and I'm very excited this winter in November and December to be bringing free YMCA STEM classes to the library for elementary age kids. This is the YMCA's first dip into bringing YMCA programming into the community where we don't have a dedicated YMCA. So we're looking at hopefully getting some good attendance to that and they will keep doing that in the new year. Our adult librarian has been busy doing pop-up libraries, actually taking books down to the senior center and getting lots of great checkouts, as well as pop-up libraries with Mount St. Mary's. Those students don't have as great of access to transportation to come to the public library. And while they have a beautiful library there, they do not have pleasure reading material there. It is all academic. So we make strategic visits right before they're going home or, you know, during those times when they might need some pleasure reading. So that's been going very well. And we're still can have high-quality programming in the branches at my time. Oh, sorry. Oh, I'm almost done. We have a bread making workshop coming up on November 15th for adults. And we have also started adaptive programming for adults with intellectual disabilities on the third Wednesday of every month. And December plans to be even more exciting, so come check us out. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I have a library book overdue. I promise it'll be there tomorrow.
Lucky for you, we are fine-free, so bring it back when you can.
Okay.
Was it from high school?
All right, next, next one of our public comments is former Commissioner Pollitt.
Hi, Amy Bowman-Pollitt. I live within town. First, I wanted to begin by expressing appreciation for the vigilant host company Swift Response with the recent house fire in Pennsylvania. Their actions played an integral role in saving lives. Likewise, I want to praise the quick reaction of the town in providing water to our residents who needed it. The resulting strain on our water system, however, revealed vulnerable, how vulnerable our infrastructure may be to large-scale water draws. My question is, does the town currently have a formal mutual aid agreement that addresses the use of municipal resources beyond state lines and who might bear the cost of the resulting repairs if they are incurred? If not, will one be considered? Second, I do have concerns regarding the approval of the student housing at the last Board of Appeals meeting. I don't know how many of you saw it. When the council approved the ordinance in June 2025, it included an explicit condition that student housing must be located at least 500 feet from another boarding house or other student housing unit. The requirement was intentionally added to prevent over-concentration of student housing. The requirement was intentionally added to prevent over concentration of student housing in residential areas in the village zone and also to minimize disruption to surrounding homeowners. As you may recall, the property owner has two adjacent rental properties in the village zone. One has seven bedrooms and the other has four. Under our previous and current ordinance, if I'm not mistaken, boarding houses are permitted in the village zone and allow room rentals that are limited to up to five total guests per unit, no matter who rents the rooms. And over the past year, commissioners were told that the four bedroom unit was allowed under the definition of boarding house and doesn't need approval through a special exception. The seven bedroom unit was in violation because it rented rooms to more than five guests, which was not in approved use and received multiple neighborhood complaints regarding noise and trash. After the new ordinance was passed, the owner did his due diligence and applied for the special exception to continue renting the seven bedrooms to students. However, under the new ordinance, the property did not qualify for the special exception because it sits directly next to a boarding house. Its own four bedroom property, making it less than five hundred feet away from another boarding house and therefore ineligible. At the Board of Appeals meeting, the town presented both four bedroom and the seven bedroom properties together as a single unit with eleven bedrooms for special exception, which was never discussed in any of our town meetings or public hearings that I recall as commissioner. The exception for the eleven bedroom unit was granted, even though the owner repeatedly stated at Board of Appeals that these are two separate units. It appears that the Board of Appeals was not made aware that the town previously stated that the four bedroom unit did not need approval because it was already approved under the definition of boarding house. Had that fact been disclosed, the board would have been obligated to deny that application. At the same time, if the town doesn't consider the four bedroom unit a boarding house, like we had been told, then the council, town council was not provided with correct information when initially drafting the ordinance. This raises concerns on many levels. Combining two distinct properties to meet the ordinance criteria contradicts both the letter and the intent of the regulation. It effectively nullifies the five hundred foot separation rule that was included to preserve the residential character of the village zone and to protect neighboring property owners. How will this board ensure that information that is presented to you at town meetings is consistent with what is provided to Board of Appeals? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all I have for public comments. Excellent. Administrative business. We have one item for administrative business. Update on Creamery Road Pump Station. A final change order for a time extension.
I just wanted to give a quick update on the Creamery Road Pump Station. I'll start with change order number eight. If you recall, the change order for time was discussed several minute meetings ago due to different delays because it was a time extension change order only with no financial ramifications and no ramifications, any funding. The change order was approved on October eighth. However, during the due diligence, I wanted to give the board an update on the change order. This change order was again for time extension, which meant it extended the contract till November seventeenth of twenty twenty five. What led to this time delay, you'll see on page twenty one of what caused the time delay. There was an issue with the grinder pump control panel. It was replaced on April thirtieth. On May thirtieth, the contractor completed a thirty day demonstration period. However, the very next day there was the pump failure at the station. The contractor has addressed all the issues and sent the town an indemnity agreement. The building inspections were completed. However, the county held up multiple attempts to get the certificate of completion. It was finally issued on August nineteenth. The stormwater components were not typically required for substantial completion. During this project, a requirement of USDA was the ASBILTS must be submitted and approved first. The USDA has since waived the requirement and the contractor is moving forward final completion. We are the status of the pump station as of October twenty seventh. We our engineer completed a walkthrough on October twenty fourth and noted six items that still need to be completed. Most of them have been completed already since the time of this report. Most of them are final certifications on equipment and warranties. We are waiting on final approval from the county on stormwater management. They should have everything they need as of today, the county to continue their review of stormwater management. We're waiting on the final operation and management manuals. A door needs to replace be replaced. The supply fan needs to be replaced. And just a few issues with some painting. Unfortunately, with the federal government being shut down, USDA is unable to approve anything that's being sent to them. So USDA has not completed any inspections. They cannot approve any pay applications. So we're kind of stuck until USDA or till the federal government opens. But that's the status of the Creamery Road Pump Station. Final completion is there. We're just going to have to wait on the federal government.
And we're waiting for them to bless it or wait on them to send us the final?
They have to. They have to complete their own inspections because they have to. They have to sign off on final completion.
And how does that affect the ending of it and or the warranty starting period? Or does it?
That is a very good question. I will ask that question to find out how the warranties work with that because I don't know. This is the first time I've had to deal with this. So I will. I'll ask that question, how this affects our warranties.
Okay. Thank you. The next item we have here is the consent agenda and we have we have eight different. We have nine total items. We have eight eight of them that are for consideration of the appointment or for resignation. My recommendation is can we do all eight of those except which would hold out item number seven, which is a proclamation? Do separately? Can we get a motion to accept items? Oh, I was accept item seven in one motion. Are we good with that?
I'll make that motion.
For a second.
Seconded.
All those in favor to accept all items, except item number seven in this motion?
I think we should read what the items are for the record.
All right. Item one for consideration is acceptance and resignation of Patricia Galloway of the Planning Commission. Number two, consideration appointment. Sal is okay, right? Okay. As a full member of the Planning Commission, he was recently a an alternate. His term expires on March third, twenty twenty nine. Item three, consideration acceptance and resignation of Dan Garnett of the Planning Commission. Item four, consideration appointment Tricia Shepherd to the Citizens Advisory Committee with a term November third, twenty twenty five to to November third, twenty twenty seven. Number five, consideration appointment Mo Shepherd to the Citizens Advisory Committee with term of November third, twenty twenty five through November third, twenty twenty seven. Item number six, for consideration appointment Patrick Gill to the Citizens Advisory Committee as an out of town member with a term of November third to November third, twenty twenty seven. Item number eight, for consideration approval of Melissa McKinney to the Sustainable Committee Workshop. And item number nine for the consideration approval of Zina Zent to the Sustainable Committee Work Group. All those, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion stands. So item number seven, when the administrative business is for a proclamation. Municipal Government Works Month, November twenty twenty five. The Mayor and Board of Commissioners of the Town of Emmitsburg proclaim November twenty twenty five to be Municipal Government Works Month. Whereas the town was established in seventeen eighty five and whereas Maryland is home to one hundred and fifty seven, one hundred and fifty seven other municipalities and whereas municipal government represents the most responsive level of government, allowing citizens to have direct access to elected officials. And whereas in effort to educate citizens about municipal government and the importance of their participation, the Town of Emmitsburg is proud municipal government awareness and whereas municipality have enhanced the quality of life for their respective residents, maintaining natural and historic sites and structures and helping to make Maryland a great place to live, work, play and explore. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Mayor and Board of Commissioners of the Town of Emmitsburg, Maryland do hereby join the Maryland Municipal League and declare in November twenty twenty five to be Municipal Government Works Month in Emmitsburg. Do I have a motion to accept proclamation as written? I got a motion for in
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Next I have the town treasure report.
We had items. The new one. We had a big beginning balance as of October first of seven million, three hundred and thirty five thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. Total deposits was seven hundred and twenty four thousand, five hundred and seventy one dollars. Total withdrawals were six thousand, nine hundred, six hundred and ninety seven thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars. Which left was a operating balance forward of seven million, three hundred and sixty two thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. Total ten checks that were written out for, I guess, the last month or here, if anybody wanted to see them. Are the bigger checks, bigger amounts. For the total breakdown, the general fund has one point eight million dollars. Capital Projects has one point two million dollars. The store water management has twenty five thousand. Water has one hundred and eighty six thousand. ARPA has three hundred and ninety five thousand. The sewer has three million, three and a half million. Which leaves us with the total of seven million, one hundred and thirty four thousand, nine hundred and thirty one dollars.
I had a question about the check for UGI Energy for solar field two totaling almost thirteen thousand. Can you explain what it's for?
Would be for the solar field number two, which I have to pull the invoice. We are putting on the agenda for next month, the solar electric update. So that Kim can fully explain that one. But it's a it's a bill we get monthly for solar field number one, number two for the solar that was generated.
Okay.
Which then which then pay provides power to all the towns. That field is the wastewater treatment plant and some of the larger ones.
Okay, that's good that it's on our next agenda. Thank you.
Understand that we're paying or we're receiving that money?
That is a payment. We do get a reimbursement every year that basically offsets, which you will see in next month. The offset is significant.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Any additional comments on planning commission report, anything?
I'm sorry. It's a planning commission and put off the vote on the Emmett Ridge two till later this month. The the members of planning commission were also asking if the commissioners would like to entertain the idea of expanding the bike route down the road there since it's going to be expanded next to Emmett Ridge two. Like going into there as a bike route and ask what the they would just wanted to feel out, not saying making it a requirement if the commissioners would be interested in extending that discussing extending that bike route.
Is that the one on Anderson you're talking about and it extended down?
Right. So we're going to
The bridge.
Right. So we're going to extend the the road's going to extend up. So it's going to become more of a two lane road and that we put a continue that bike lane down through the expansion.
Thank you.
All right. I don't know. Yeah, I'll move on to the next item. I don't know how to. I don't know how to address them on that one. I mean, plan for the planning.
It's just an informational.
For them to
Yeah.
Consider and say we talk about. All right. Then next item, agenda items, item number one for consideration recommendation related to the Lincoln Avenue Traffic Calming Study.
So we have a representative from Meeden Hunt that prepared that conducted Lincoln Avenue Traffic Calming Study. They're prepared to go over their study and then the recommendations on dealing with the traffic issues on Lincoln Avenue. I believe they're on Zoom.
I am. Can you guys hear me?
Can you hear?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thanks for having me. My name is Devin Han and I am with Meeden Hunt. And we are delighted to be before you tonight to discuss our findings and some recommendations for the Lincoln Avenue Traffic Calming Study. I'm not sure who's controlling slides. Yep, thank you. Just a little bit of background, how we got here. The US DOT offered grants to municipal or to local governments municipalities for safe streets for all. That's trying to expand beyond just motorists, but trying to make sure that all of our pedestrians, bicyclists, scooterists, transit riders, everybody that needs to get from point A to point B can be safe out there. Frederick County has successfully been awarded several rounds of this grant. And as part of their efforts, they started a municipal technical assistance task within their grant and Emmitsburg was awarded one of those grants within the grant, I guess. And if you can keep scrolling down, thank you. Working with town staff, we focused on Lincoln Avenue with our primary objectives being to calm the speeds along Lincoln Avenue, keeping it the relatively small local road that it is, increasing safety and usability again, for all modes of traffic. And trying to minimize cut through traffic through this neighborhood road that obviously parallels several other major routes that people are trying to avoid at certain times of the day. And then we had secondary objectives that were, for example, utilizing low cost techniques in order to meet those objectives. That was part of the requirement from the Frederick County Grant. And then just to better delineate the edge of the street. As we all know, from being on Lincoln Avenue, it kind of it. The width of the road varies and where pedestrians or bicyclists may or may not feel safe is it also varies. So we wanted to kind of have defined space for all users. Next slide. Thank you. So we prepared two alternatives. The first alternative is a share, what we call a shared street. It would maintain the existing two way traffic flow. It utilizes traffic calming and pavement marking or striping to encourage lower speeds. And then implementing buffers or delineations to separate the paved pedestrian path from the travel lane specifically on the east side of Seton Avenue. And here's an example of some of the elements that might be within the shared street. You can see there's kind of limited, sometimes limited markings along the street. The bicyclist would share the travel lane with the motorist. We highlight where we want the pedestrians to be and then you have your speed humps. Next slide. Thank you. Alternative two was turning Lincoln Avenue into a one way street with what we call a contraflow bike lane. So we would basically take. You could you could do it either way. The concepts that we prepared showed Lincoln Avenue, the West, West Lincoln Avenue going one way westbound, east going eastbound only. So bicyclists that were traveling with the direction of traffic would travel again in the same lane, but we would develop an adjacent bike lane for bicyclists that want to go in the opposite direction. So essentially, I feel like that sounded very complicated. So the cars would only go in one direction. Bicyclists would have the ability to go in both directions. This alternative would increase signing and pavement markings again. Talked about the contraflow and similar traffic calming efforts to keep maintain those lower speeds and then just using And then just using some physical buffers again to separate um, the paved walkway. Got a, the picture that we have here is similar to what could be implemented. Obviously, the, the pictures for a bike lane, um, ours would be for pedestrians, but that's some of the uh, low-cost techniques that could be used. Um, we did host a public input workshop on August fourth that had good attendance. Presented both alternatives in an interactive format and all of the public comments were recorded and documented. Um, as you can see in this picture, we have posted notes where people were able to write down their thoughts for the various, either the various alternatives or the places where they struggle to navigate Lincoln Avenue or would like to see improvement. And while we did get several people that recognized the benefits of alternate to the one-way contra-flow bike lane. Overall, the public sentiment was in favor of the two-way alternative one. So where do we go from here? Um, the board of commissioners will review it this fall and winter and we're obviously looking for your uh, input. Then the Frederick County Grant Program Manager would approve of the final design this coming winter and Frederick County plans to bring, bring on a contractor for installation of several of these um, low-cost, quick-build projects later this spring, next spring. So I appreciate your time and I would welcome any questions you have. Yeah, and at the end, after the thank you, we just have some of the, some pictures of the um, specific alternatives. If anybody, if for anybody who didn't make it out to the public workshop.
Is there something we're going to discuss in future meetings or?
No, we were looking for a um, decision on alternative one and alternative two.
Okay, all right. I'll, I'll, I'll start off a little discussion there because alternative one of the two, I like alternative one more favorably, but I don't know is the, I don't know wh- what all they did as far as measurements. So if, if um, Meeden Hunt went out and did actual measurements, is it wide enough to do everything they, they, with the two-lane traffic and a, and the bike trail? Bike path um, when that, I don't know. Do we have enough room for all that? Widthwise?
Majority of the road was between um, anywhere from about fifteen to twenty feet wide, so it certainly is tight in a couple of spaces. But for the most part, yes, there is room for, because again, remember alternate one is where the bikes are sharing the lane with the vehicles. So you would have um.
Okay.
You would have room.
So then alternative one shows then two lanes plus, plus, it actually shows two lanes and I guess a small so, small shoulder, whatever, plus the sidewalk.
Right, and obviously the, the shoulder comes and goes depending on the width of the road and the sidewalk would be what you have out there today. So some spots have sidewalk and um,
Okay.
Other sections do not. Then I, as I mentioned, we would add the delineation um, on the east side to kind of separate that paved pedestrian route area from the vehicular travel lanes.
I, I like the improvement. I mean, there's been a talk about improvement of, of Lincoln Avenue for a couple of decades at least. So, but room has always been the, been the, been the problem, uh, with the lack thereof. Kathy, do we know the distance?
I don't know off the top of my head.
So we haven't gone out and we haven't measured on our, on Lincoln Avenue or is?
Well, they did.
These, no, they did. This is the exact number.
The consultant did.
He said between fifteen and twenty. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
I have a, I think it's probably a dumb question. If, if you went to the one-way traffic, would that cut traffic in half or would it increase traffic uh, with it only being one way that more people would use it going one way? Because one of the concerns of the citizens is all the traffic up there. So would one-way traffic decrease the flow or would it increase since it is one-way? Did that make any sense?
It, it does. It makes a lot of sense. Um, I don't know that I have the data to give you a great answer. Um, and when I say that, I don't have like a traffic count to show by time of day. Which way people were going, but I think we could choose the direction that's kind of counter to where. Right, so if you're coming up and you are forced to go east on Lincoln, it's, might be taking you out of your way, so. No, it's actually, it's a good question.
Okay, as you say, my, my, my concern about the one-way is then you have a lot of space, a lot of width. You're probably going to increase the speed.
Yeah, that was one of the concerns at the, the community meeting that was brought up, switching it to one-way would result in a speed increase.
I believe it would. Yeah, I mean, I, I've seen that most people use Lincoln Avenue to bypass the light at the square. So how would we decide whether it wants to go one way or the other way? I, I, I like the two-way option myself. We have had some discussion years ago about having one-way, but east, the eastern, east Lincoln was one-way west. And they had another way for west Lincoln would have been east. So everybody's headed toward the square. From wherever you're going, but the concern about one-way for me is the wider, you're having much wider travel lane for one-way traffic to potentially increase speed. Which means you're definitely getting Main Street in front of your house, behind your house, if you live there.
What, what I gained from the workshop is if you're coming into town on South Seton, you can turn, if it was one-way, you'd be able to turn right onto East Lincoln or turn left onto West Lincoln. So the one-way would actually run in opposite directions, which I think would be confusing for people. Um, the other thing is if Lincoln is one-way, it's going to put more traffic onto Main Street and jam up the light in the square even more than it is now. So I like option one.
Can we do in a traffic study for back there to see the times and the amounts of cars that are going in which direction?
They did have the count. They have done it. Um, one of our first meetings, we did discuss traffic counts and all of that, so we do already have that.
Could I get a copy of that number if, if it's around? I don't want to go hunting for it, but.
Yeah, we'll find, we'll find it.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry Kathy, just didn't have it.
No worries. Absolutely, no worries.
Probably is a, a higher count in the summertime because of the pool. And the parks are being used a lot more in the summertime than they are in the wintertime. So the, the traffic count would probably, would be higher in the summer.
Good point.
Spring. I also like option one, the two-way. With the bicycles going in each stretch. Cause the N. East is, is skinnier than the west is. Western gets skinny till you get clear up to the end where it goes to single lane. And that is one-way that way where it goes out. And going east, I mean, going west, I mean, going west, it goes to one, one lane going out in the east, it's almost one lane the whole way down because you have to get over when another car comes. If it wouldn't have been for us putting the sidewalk in for everyone to go down on the side, but they wouldn't be hardly a place to pour around, you know, to get out of the way.
Do we have the option at a later date to change if we see things are not working the way they're supposed to? Or is this set in stone that once we do this, it will stay this way? Can we come back into it and address it if there is a problem?
I don't see why that if you, if you go with alternative one and we get the grant funding and all that through the county and we do alternative one in two, three years down the road, it's just not working and, and the board wants to revisit and maybe go one-way. I, I mean, I don't see a reason why that couldn't happen unless there'd be something in the grant that wouldn't allow it.
Okay.
That I'm not aware of.
Okay.
No, I, I would second that. Um, because the whole point, I talked about the low-cost um, improvements and so forth. The point of those elements was so that towns and the county could try out some different um, elements. And like you said, if the town doesn't like it or it's not working, they're supposed to be easier to remove.
Thank you.
Yep.
I believe that the sidewalk goes the whole way. The only place the sidewalk's missing is behind the outhouse and fire company. That's the only place that's missing up. Where the garage, uh, the old uh, eastern garage was.
Right.
And ev- everything else should be connected except for up at the, where the one-way goes out or dying, Welbecker's houses. Sidewalk stops behind that, doesn't go all the way out.
Yeah, I wa- I was here the night that, that the, uh, that the citizens were here and they, they were okay with two-way traffic. Um, but it, it will double the traffic in front of the houses because we're all the houses on uh, West Lincoln. Uh, it's one-way now, so it's, if you go two-way, it is going to increase traffic. They seem to be okay with that.
Okay. All right.
Where is it one-way on West Lincoln?
Uh, once you pass the entrance to Lincoln on the park, that turns into one-way going, going out, going west. You can't come in by the doughboy apartments.
Wonder if I've gone out that way.
Yeah, I was going to talk to you about that later.
Any other questions, comments?
We had talked about maybe it being one-way right behind the firehouse because it's so narrow there. Um, would that be part of the option one? So if you're coming up South Seton, you could turn left. Like go behind the fire department, but if you're coming from the opposite way, when you reach the stop sign, you would have to turn right and like go down by Pizza Hut instead of jamming cars up right there at the stop sign behind the um, fire department.
How about just putting a do not enter sign right there and make the traffic turn automatically?
Well, yeah.
Leaves it open.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly, yeah.
There, there was a wreck. I think the fire hydrant was knocked off at one time, but not too long ago, when I'm coming out there.
I'm not sure there's room for two vehicles to get through in that little tiny spot because there's a building.
Like she said, you had to move over, we had to pull over into fire or outhouse parking.
Right, and I think that's why the, the plan doesn't show the striping continuing through there because of the narrow width.
All right, any other questions, comments, discussion? Is there a motion to move forward with um? Go ahead and accept option one. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion of second for alternative one of the plan. Um, any additional discussion?
I, I just want to, I'm in favor of option one, but I I, I would like to see commissioner turn quest option that we do make it one-way behind the outhouse and the fire departments through, you can only go one car at a time there on the road.
That's why I said I, I would just put up a do not enter.
Yeah.
And that would work. Resolves it.
Right.
So then you would be spending
School lane.
One group down school lane. Good.
Right, so which is not possible either.
Yeah, but couldn't you just make that one-way going down and then the people coming up north or south Seton would turn left to go up that way? So you're, you're funneling, but you're controlling still the traffic being able to, to do two-way. So the people coming east would turn right there at school lane, come down, and then the people in South Seton could turn left, come in to the two-lane.
If you put a do not.
Enter sign so they can't come in.
Where the school, where you're going to the school. You have to be right at the school and that way they can't go past that.
Right.
And then they turn out by. School around.
Yeah, by Paul's, yes.
That just might work.
Is there any reason that you couldn't turn left off of South Seton onto West Lincoln? Are you suggesting?
I just said, yes, we would.
So that would still be allowable. It would just be leaving, parting West Lincoln where you'd have to go down school lane.
Right.
Instead of going out, okay.
Be westbound for that first three hundred feet or so.
Yeah, got it.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Just got any additional discussion? Comments? All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion voting announced. All right, that moves to item number two. Consideration approval of change order number eight for the larger level tank at the new water clarifier.
Yes. Yes, so that's basically what this change order is for. The current design had a smaller level tank. Um, as the water comes into the new clarifier. Um, unfortunately, it was not designed large enough and it continues to overflow. So there's a need for a larger leveling tank um, in the clarifier. And you'll see the amount is at twenty-eight thousand four hundred eighty dollars and ninety-five cents. Um, this is an absolute necessity. If we do not get the larger tank, the plant will not work.
And we still do have funding left.
We do have funding.
Right, so it's still, there's funding in the grant, so that'll be coming out of, out of the, the grant, so it won't be coming out of our water fund.
So monies are available for, for item number two. Go ahead and make a motion, we approve.
I second.
Shouldn't say. Motion, we have a second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And, and this was a design, uh, a design flaw with the engineers, not with our staff.
All right, that takes us on to item number three for consideration approval of expanding the community garden. This is just for the expansion, correct? This is just for the expansion, has nothing to do with the discussion we had at our last workshop. And that is going to be continued on one of our, at our, which call it next meeting. I'll make a motion, we accept it. All right, motion to to item number three to expand the community garden. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made in second. Do we have any additional discussion?
Yes. I'm not sure what we are approving because an expansion proposal was submitted to, actually two proposals were submitted. They were on our workshop agenda, but we did not discuss either proposal. So we're approving something we haven't even reviewed or talked about as a council. Which is not appropriate.
I think we can get an approved and expansion and then come back and when we do the next meeting, we can include how much of the expansion we want to put into it.
I think at our workshop, we had specifically stated that we should hold off on reviewing any proposals for an expansion until the guidelines were complete and we saw or determined how the garden was going to move forward.
Okay. So I'll remove the motion that I made.
I mean, if I'm wrong, correct me.
No, I, I think it's there, but I think while we had two proposals, I think there's more than enough space to do everything
Yes.
there that, you know, we can get into the nitty-gritty and approve, hey, we want this much for a pollinator, this much for a planting garden. But to say, I don't think we need to debate, do we not want to expand it? Because I think it's more than enough room to accommodate everyone.
Well, if we have forty raised beds and only ten people show up requesting a bed, there's no need for an expansion. That's why I thought we decided that we were going to see how the next six months or eight months goes. To see if an expansion is even needed.
But that's not hurting anything for having the additional uh, beds there. It's not hurting anything for them to be there, but they are there if we need them. We can always pull them back if we need to.
Right, and if we're, if we're saying we're going to wait to see, do we need all the beds? You're waiting till after the sign-out period.
Right. But to have it available, I think is appropriate. And then if we don't need. But to have it available, I think is appropriate. And then if we don't need it, we could always pull that back.
Well, again, I don't know what plan is being approved for an expansion, whether it's going to be raised beds or in-ground or straw beds or.
None of that. I think right now we're just saying that, that, that entire lot can be used for a garden. Nothing particular is approved at this point, other than we're, we're gonna say the entire lot can be.
Your next agenda items, I guess if you have a garden or not.
Right.
Right.
For, for the expand or don't expand.
So they're moot.
So it may be.
Right.
But so.
Well, I guess, I guess I'd be okay if we reframed it to say an expansion to cover the entire lot or that the entire lot can be used for a garden in one form or another, but we'll still have to review proposals.
Yeah, commissioner, I, yeah, I think both proposals were to expand the garden. Uh, from what I remember reading, because one was to uh, keep what we had and put a pollinating garden in, and the other was to uh, keep what we have and expand uh, the growth of the, the vegetables and things like that. So I think, I think both proposals needed to have more room. So I think you'd be safe and then we can still decide.
That the entire lot, right, that the entire, I'd be okay approving that the entire lot would be available for any future proposed community garden expansion.
And that would give us the, the go-ahead to, to go for that grant. So we wouldn't be wasting the grant money or losing that grant money.
But if something happens in the next meeting and you don't, whatever doesn't get approved into grant, although you.
We just won't, we just won't accept it.
You won't take, take, um, action. Okay.
All right. So, so again, we have the motion. We have a second. We've had our, some discussions. Any additional discussion?
I, I would just like to amend the motion that we're approving the full lot for a possible expansion.
All right. Do we have a second on the amendment? One second, I'm sorry.
Clark, do they have to withdraw their motion, their original motion? Are they good?
No. Do it.
I withdraw my withdrawal. It's the original motion that I put out there.
Well, those commissioners, and then she has, he has a motion to expand it. She's just trying to clarify that is the cold spot. Not ten feet. So do we have, do we have, do we have a
If I need.
Second on the amendment.
To increase the.
To, to the whole lot.
I'll second.
Thank you.
So now we have the motion is to expand it for the entire space of the property next to her.
If the need arises, yes.
I'm just checking.
I'm going.
Thank you.
Very good. Uh, any additional discussion on that now? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Next agenda item is number four for consideration approval ordinance to authorize up to nine hundred thousand dollars in the tax-exempt bonds to be issued pursuant to MDE's Maryland Water Infrastructure Finance Administration in connection with the North Seaton Avenue Water Replacement Project. This is one of the standard requirements that we do.
This is just a standard thing we do. Each time we do a, not each time, but most times we do.
Correct. The, the town always has to adopt an ordinance whenever receiving bonds, loans from state and federal agencies.
All right. So do we have a motion to accept ordinance number twenty-five dash seventeen, I believe, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Same move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to accept ordinance number twenty-two-five, Water Commissioners Town of Emmitsburg Drinking Water Bond Series twenty-two-five?
I have a question. Go ahead. You first.
The only thing I'm gonna say, I'm in favor of the bond, but I, I'm always objecting to prepayment penalties. And of course, this one has a prepayment penalty.
Nothing you can do.
Yeah, I, I agree. That's why.
I mean, yes, but here we are.
Except that are.
Don't get the money.
There isn't anything you can do.
So requesting, we are asking for a loan for roughly eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand. When that loan is repaid, what, what fund will we pay it from since it's more than just water?
Correct. So we actually have a meeting tomorrow between myself, Ms. Shaw and the town accountant on how to capture all the funding because there are different components, different funding agencies are going to allow different parts of this project since it's so many different components. So like this loan is going to cover waterline, restoration of the roadway, sidewalks, stormwater, buyer retention planters. So depending on the invoice that comes through that month, it may be fifty percent water, fifty percent general fund. And so that's how it's going to be accounted for. Um, this is going to take staff time to manage that, make sure that each department is paying what they need to pay and what the loan funds are covering.
Okay. And then on page three, it says the mayor is authorized to make changes in the principal amount.
Correct.
So to increase it, um, is there a percentage or a dollar amount that it's capped at?
There are, there are no, there are no limits within reason. Um, I highlighted it, Clark, but if you want to go ahead. I did. I need to find it. Let me find it again. I highlighted it.
Like, could the mayor say, okay, well, we need a hundred and fifty thousand? Well, no, it's already.
Yeah, he can. He's, you know, in, in.
It's eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand.
Right.
So could he increase that by three hundred thousand? Is there a limit, a dollar limit?
There's not a dollar limit.
No.
Or you say reasonable, what's reasonable?
It says here.
Commissioner, are you saying to make a payment? Is it what you're saying to make a?
No, if there's a change in the loan, the mayor is authorized to make changes to the amount of the bond.
Correct. And that's standard. It's been, this is what is in every bond ordinance we've ever done. So the mayor has the authority because it is a fluid moving thing. It's not going to go up by three hundred thousand. We have another loan that's pending approval through MDE for two point five million to capture the rest of it. So it's not going to go up to three hundred thousand. MDE is not going to give us an additional three hundred thousand without going through their due diligence and process. And that's why if you see the agenda item actually states.
Up to nine hundred.
Up to nine hundred thousand. Is more realistic. And then he also has the the ability to, on the interest rates. Basically, the interest rate of payback is fifty percent of the bond rate for the preceding month of the loan closing. So for example, in August of twenty today, the rate was four point six two percent. So fifty percent of that is two point three one percent. Um, in August of twenty-five, it was five point one zero percent. So the interest rates are coming down um, for payback, but he has the authority to approve that interest rate as well. And the other final thing is to change the year. If we don't close in the bond, it says twenty-two-five, but more than likely nothing's going to get pushed through till twenty-two-six and he has the authority just to change the year as well.
Okay. And then will we receive the loan or any of the grants in advance of the work being completed?
So right now we don't have a grant, but the loan um, on letter D, the bond or so much of the principal amount thereof shall have been advanced from time to time under the terms of the loan agreement. So you can draw down on a loan um, through.
Prior to the work being completed?
Not prior to the work being completed. Um, you get a.
Can only get that money when, when the work is completed.
Correct. If pay application is approved and then you can draw down on the loan.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, questions, discussion? All right. So we have motion to accept ordinance number twenty-two-five seventeen, Water Commissioners Town of Emmitsburg Drinking Water Bond Series twenty-two-five. Motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion in favor? And item number five is being postponed. I guess we'll bring it up at the next meeting or future meeting. That takes us to item number six. Consideration approval estimate related to the groundwater appropriation permit project to expand plant capacity at the, at the water treatment plant.
You see on page forty-four, I did a, a brief summary. Um, if you recall back in October of twenty-four, the board approved an agreement with Arrow to analyze the town's current water system, infrastructure, system usage, current permitted water allocation and future growth of the town so that we could possibly increase our appropriations through MDE. They completed their study in May of twenty-five. The town rec, or the recommendation was not to pursue increased allocations at this time due to configuration of the town's water plant. Um, the way the water plant is configured, we can only have a permitted capacity of four hundred and sixty-three gallons per day and an operating capacity of three hundred and ninety-eight thousand gallons per day. So increasing our permitted allocation is, is not feasible. You'll see the short-term recommendations is to conduct leak detection survey, which the town does at least twice a year on a, on a routine basis and then as needed. Number two was to evaluate the water treatment plant's um, treatment capacity and determine necessary improvements that can increase capacity. This is the, the proposal that's before you tonight. And then the other short term was reconfigure wells three through five. And then you'll see the mid, medium term and then long-term recommendations. The proposal uh, in front of you basically would conduct data review of the current plant, the MDE regulatory permits, maintenance records, equipment information, age, manufacturer, useful life, um, water withdrawal information and then course of action recommendations. The estimate and then one um, will hold our progress meetings. They anticipate, once they get the notice to receive, that we would have a report back within three months. And the estimate before you for the work is seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Kathy, that's for the short, short term?
This is for them to conduct the, yes, this is for number two, the evaluate the water treatment plant's treatment capacity. Yes.
And the seventeen K would come out of the water fund?
Yes.
Do we have the money?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, that's a hundred and eighty-six.
All right. So then do we have a motion to accept letter number six? Out to seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Described here in their scope of services. This is just for item two though, right? The money?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Make the motion. Item number two, the amount of seventeen thousand, seventy-five. Correct. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Right. We have a motion. We have a second. Uh, any discussion on the agenda?
I, I have something. Um, so we're able to, our capacity is four sixty, four hundred and sixty-three thousand, but a capacity of approximately three hundred and ninety-eight thousand gallons per day.
Right.
And we consume on average of two hundred and forty-three thousand gallons per day. So from two forty-three to three ninety-eight is, is the available water. Within that amount, there's room, correct, for Brookfield, Emmett Ridge and the distillery. Do we know how much consumption will rise? Will we, will we reach that three ninety-eight or go beyond?
No, we still have taps available um, for the Emmett Ridge. We, we, we still have um, plenty of taps available for the Emmett Ridge um, that will eat into your, your capacity, but there's still, I don't have my taps in front of me. But there's plenty of taps available for Emmett Ridge. That's already been calculated in. Um, the distillery would have taps available, but unfortunately that project has been pulled. And then what was your other question?
The distillery has been pulled?
Yes, they backed up. And Brookfield, yes, there is plenty of capacity for Brookfield. I can, I think Ms. Julia is pulling up the taps. I can tell you.
Kathy, are those lots there by the old Rudder store?
Yes, that's part of the Brookfield. Um, what is it? Ten homes? Ten homes.
How many are they putting in?
Ten, ten.
There's a lot of joint into it. That's, that's different.
Correct. That's, that's still for, that's two lots that are for sale.
Okay. Too small to sell.
I guess I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse. I think we, we need to at some point in the future expand our capacity, but that only makes sense if our distribution system can reliably deliver the water. And we have found that we have aging pipes. So to force more water through those aging pipes doesn't make any sense to me. I think we should focus on our plan of replacing our outdated pipes and we had talked about a line coming down the mountain. I know that's going to be a considerable cost, but you know, we just found out with this fire that our system is delicate. So to spend seventeen thousand on a on a contract to determine, can we expand the water plant? Just seems premature. That's all.
Well, I think it's important that we do this survey so we know what you have in the rears, what we have that we can look forward to in the future. So that's just how I feel.
Because even if, the only thing I would add, and, and I do understand what Commissioner Turnquist is saying, but the only thing I would add is once you do this study and whatever the recommendations are, they don't happen overnight. So to, to do these recommendations, you need to plan to start now to be ready for a need three, four years down the road. And we are continuing to replace lines. You've got North Seaton Avenue and West Main Street that we are working towards.
Now, I see this as an informational thing and the more information we have available to us, the better off we'll make decisions in the future.
Well, seventeen thousand is a large chunk of money out of our already struggling water fund. But we can move to a vote.
All right. Any additional comments, discussion? All right. We have, we have a motion to, to accept item number two. The amount of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those pose?
Nay.
Motion, motion passes four to one. Number seven for discussion and consideration ordinance twenty-two-five fifteen, which establishes a vacant property tax, tax registration program in the town of Emmitsburg. I see the town attorney just stepped up there. It must have some.
Well, I thought I'd just run through. I think this is the second or the third time this ordinance has been in front of the board. So just want to hit the highlights of things that were changed coming out of our last discussion. A lot of, and I am looking at the red line version starting on page fifty-two of your agenda packets, just so we're singing from the same hymnal here. A lot of the changes are more trying to make sure everything is clear and speaks to each other correctly. I think the big substantive changes that we have coming out of the last one, um, this now only applies to non-residential properties, so it does not apply to residential properties. In the maintenance standards section, we removed letter H that kind of referred to some additional maintenance standards that we're going to be promulgated later. Um, I mean, my position would be that whatever maintenance standards you want to apply to these properties above and beyond what already is in the town code, they should just be here. And I think that we have done that. Other items, I would recommend taking out the appeal section. I believe that I alluded to this the last time I was before you, but I don't know that having a separate appeals process makes sense for this ordinance given the size of your community and of your boards. Um, I know that in the city of Frederick, they have a separate board that hears appeals for their vacant property ordinance. Makes sense for the city of Frederick. They can staff multiple review boards and things of that nature. Not so much here. And I do believe that ultimately the way that this ordinance gets enforced is through the citation process, municipal infraction citation process. So someone's going to get a citation. If they want to contest it, they request. If they want to contest it, they request to stand trial in the district court for Frederick County, just like any other ordinance violation. I think that's where you're getting your judicial review here. I don't think it makes sense to have a separate step in the in the process. Um. Also, I guess the other, well, two more things that I'll highlight, and then certainly anything you want to discuss, I'm happy to. Um, the hardship exemptions, tried to nail those down a little bit more to make it less of a subjective process. Um, so I believe before we kind of left it open-ended to if you want to just make your case, we'll consider it. I would recommend limiting it to the three items that we have here now, which are if it's actively being listed for sale or rent. And one other thing, uh, we talked about, you know, how do we get away from someone listing a hundred thousand dollar property for a million bucks just to get out of this code, but no one's ever going to buy it for that? Um, I don't know that tying it to fair market value is a good process, because then what is fair market value? Someone's going to have to figure that out. So this is not in what you have in front of you, but something I was thinking of just earlier today was if you want to try to uh, do an inner round around any nonsense of people overvaluing their property. You could put a time limit on it. You know, in terms of how long has it been on the market? And another thing I would say to that point is we do have a requirement now that it be listed with an agent. So, you know, most agents are looking to make their commission, so they have an incentive to list things at a reasonable price point, or at least within a zone. Um, but if you.
Interrupt you just one second.
Sure.
We're on that area.
Sure.
Um, could we use the State Department of Assessment and Taxation value of the property at that time?
Well, I think that the state assessment value is generally fairly undermarket, so I'm not sure that that's really a I I mean, maybe there's a way you could make that work. I personally think that just having a time limitation, you know, if it's been on the market for six months, a year, you haven't done a price drop, something like that, maybe that's when we talk about taking away the exemption. I don't know that tying it to S D A T value is.
I know, looking at my value of my property taxes, it did not go down, it went up.
Yeah.
It's probably higher than the value of my house.
Yeah, I know. I just, I would say as a general matter, I don't, I don't think that, and this is also me as a lawyer, when I'm in court dealing with property values, S D A T value is basically meaningless. It's, you know, what is, what is an appraiser going to say about this? Yeah.
Or you moved on.
No, sure. It it's a reasonable suggestion, but I don't know if it's a great way of actually capturing things. Um.
It's for residential only.
This is for non-residential. This does not apply to residential.
Okay.
Right? So.
Do we have a separate ordinance for the residential?
Well, no. So initially, this was pitched to cover all properties, and we were going to target certain zones. But the feedback that we got at the last meeting was we're not comfortable with the residential piece. So as of now, and this could always be changed at a later date, if you want to reconsider that, but what you have in front of you is non-residential properties in all zones.
Okay.
Um. Okay, just two more quickly. So the other qualifying circumstances would be if there is some type of legal action relating to the property that clogs it up, if it's an estate probate, if it's in bankruptcy, something like that, which limits what a person can do. Um, certainly, I think that's reasonable. And then the active construction with permits, I think, again, that also is reasonable. We discussed things such as, you know, sickness or disability being maybe another example of a hardship. I'm not sure that that makes as much sense in the context of now this being limited to commercial properties, one. Um, and also, I think that's really difficult to enforce in police. Um, it's going to put a lot of pressure on staff to determine what sort of illness and disability qualifies for an exemption and what doesn't. That's not, I I don't know. I think that presents a lot of thorny issues that I'm not sure we really need to open um, ourselves up to. That's just my take on that. And then the other change is reducing the fine level um, to five hundred dollars per violation. So those are the highlights. Happy to discuss.
So I like the hardship on the timeframe, and I think, you know, for commercial property, probably actively on the market for, I've been less than, well, twelve months or less. If it's beyond twelve months, then they're subject to, subject to the ordinance.
Yeah, further on that point, it says any exemption shall be subject to conditions and time limits. So we just talked about the time limit. Um. But what are the conditions? Subject to conditions and time limits? So I would recommend that we define what those are for transparency and consistency.
I agree. So I think that time limits, we just talked about what time limit would make sense for the um, listing.
Now, now, Clark, do you have anything I have about the list? I know, I take, if I got it on the market, I've been there for, I don't know, eleven, eleven, eleven months, and as I take it off for thirty days, I put it back on the market. Can we try and way to control that to where the actual listing is maybe less than twelve months, but um, it's really been on the market or I don't know.
You're just trying to avoid a loophole of somebody listing it, pulling it,
Pulling it.
Putting it back on, restarting their clock?
Yes.
I think we can.
Because in some ways it's a loophole, in other ways, it's also just a strategy for for realtors and owners to not show the property been listed for sure.
Right.
Because it looks, because it looks bad on the ads, saying it's, there's a reason why it's been listed so long.
Sure.
So couldn't we put that into the fine process that if it's pulled, the thirty days still continues? Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, I I think that, I think that if I, if we go back and we add the timeline piece, and I can definitely try to account for that problem, because I do, I think you're right. It is just part of the well, not to put it in a disparaging manner, but it's part of the game, right? If you have something that's on there for a while, so.
Doesn't matter if it's one list, one continuing listing or multiple listings altogether. I have an alternate solution or a different view on the fine. Um, I looked around and thought about it, and I thought maybe we could do a um, a half a percent fine on the S D A T value of the property. And then uh, every thirty days after that, it would increase another half a percent. So a two hundred thousand dollar house would have a one thousand dollar fine. Five hundred thousand dollar house would have a uh, twenty-five hundred dollar fine.
You are gonna um, and I'm I'm not going to try to do math while I'm standing in front of you, fine people tonight. Uh, there is a cap in terms of the amount that you're legally allowed to find for a violation in Maryland, and I believe they they just recently increased it to five thousand dollars. It used to be a thousand dollars. Um, I think we, I think we may need to update our code to reflect that, actually, if we haven't already. But um, and and so you're talking about the the fine amount, not the
The fine amount.
The tax increase that happens after so many years.
Fine amount.
Um. Well.
I I kind of feel a little differently. I think five hundred is very steep, considering each day
Right.
that you haven't met the the policy, you're going to get another five hundred dollar fine every single day when you're not in compliance. So I would say at least allow thirty days or a reasonable amount of time to correct the deficiency.
How about just giving them the the paper for thirty days? You have thirty days to correct this problem.
Right, but it's not in the policy.
Then day number thirty-one, you would invoke the fine.
Right, I agree. I think it just needs to be part of the.
Yeah, and and to be perfectly candid, I um, when staff and I met to discuss this, we did talk about that issue, and I I think that I just, the change didn't carry over to the version that you have in front of you, but I I agree. Um.
So. Not an infraction.
Yes, I I think that.
That's what you meant to.
Yes, yes.
Um, the other thing is, well, how many vacant buildings are there? Do we know roughly? Half dozen?
Probably right now, yeah.
Um, the the, one of the problems I see is if a building is vacant, and let's say the top, the bottom is storefront and the top is apartments, right? Um, the annual tax rate that we would charge is based on the entire building, correct? And it's not prorated to the space that's vacant.
Correct. As currently written, any tax increase is an increase on the total assessed value. It doesn't for a a mixed-use building, like what you're referring to, we are not prorating that.
Yeah, I think that's problematic. I think it should be prorated for the vacant portion of the building. And I've said it before, but I I think our tax rate increases is very, very aggressive. And I couldn't locate a single municipality in Maryland that uses such an aggressive tax rate. Most other Maryland cities still use registration fees, some with escalation, rather than changing the tax rate itself. So would we consider capping the multiplier at three, three times? Instead of five times, I mean, for a five hundred thousand dollar property, um, if it's vacant for four years, the taxes go from seventeen thirty-two up to eighty-six sixty. So that's a lot.
Yeah.
You know, and there could be multiple reasons for somebody not selling a property. Now, to avoid the fines, maybe I'll just sell the property, but then all the people that I'm renting to, they're going to be displaced.
So you're saying cabinet at three times the percent? So in year two, it goes to three, three times. Are you saying a year two that it doesn't go any it remains, it remains three percent from year?
From, yeah, year, two years, it would be, yeah, cap it at three. Even then, it's still pretty high, but.
Now, you're saying that a building that is vacant on the bottom, but occupied on the top should only be cap or surely be half?
Yeah, the tax increase should be prorated to the vacant portion.
But it's a whole building.
Right.
So I would say you taxed the whole building, not half that's vacant and half that's, you know, occupied. It's still one building, so the building itself should be taxed at a whole building, not a half, in my opinion.
I agree with the whole building, but I I I
I think.
I can say, I can go with the the three, the multiplier of three, I can go with that.
Now, my my question for staff is, do we have any buildings that have strange, because I'm going to go back, we spent months discussing buildings for the rental requirement, and we heard today that the appeals came back and used different definitions than our understanding, I think, of the board in total of what we're doing. Is there any other property, you know, when I'm concerned about like a mixed use, that's all of a sudden going to drop out of this?
The old Main Street deli was a deli, and then they had people living.
Right, yeah, well, we have a number of mixed use, but what I want is something that that all of a sudden, we're not going to declare and say, well, it's not mixed use from some definition, because we had talked about two adjacent rental properties, and it got turned into one.
Okay.
So I um, your definition of mixed use there is on page one. I think that is pretty straightforward.
I mean, I think the goal of this is to um, correct the the blight properties, right? Make make Main Street look better, improve, and there's very detailed maintenance instructions in here. And if you don't adhere to those maintenance instructions, then you're going to have to pay a five hundred dollar fee, right? Fine, if it's not corrected. So if they've corrected it and the building looks fantastic, but we're still going to charge you up to five times your tax rate, your property tax rate. Because what, we want to be aggressive?
Well, I think it's we want the building to be put to use, because even if it looks, well, again, this is uh, this is beyond legal, but I I think the intent here is if even if you have a vacant building that looks fabulous, no broken windows, no, you know, the yard's maintained, everything's safe inside, it's still empty. And I think the idea is we want buildings that are being put to good use. I mean, I think the mayor has said that, you know, there are some some owners of buildings are in the situation where it financially makes more sense for them just to hold the asset rather than rent it out to people. Again, that I I think you've said that at some point. So I I think that's the other piece that the increased tax rate is trying to provide incentives to use the property.
Do you have any comments?
Well, if we don't do something, you know, this is sounds wild, but the whole downtown could become vacant if we don't hold people to, you know, doing something with their buildings. All the businesses could all go away and go, uh, I'm just not going to rent anymore. We could be, we could have a vacant downtown, and I don't think that's what we're looking for.
When a thriving downtown.
Right, that's what the people are asking for.
Right, right. Yeah, I I don't want to see where we get downtown Frederick. We have a building that's been vacant for twenty-four years, and nothing can be done about it.
So what we have here in the orders right now is to look at a way to change the time length of it being.
Yeah, so I I think that um, okay, I think applying specific, uh, coming up with, I I think Commissioner Turnquist is right, rather than just saying subject to conditions and time limits for each of these three, we can include reasonable time limits. I mean, I think, I'm not sure that the legal action one, a time limit even makes sense, because if it's it's in bankruptcy, there's nothing the the owner can do, right? It's there at the whim of the court, and don't I know, that takes a while. Um, but I think for one and three, at least, we can work on um, just go ahead and make an explicit what the time limit's going to be, and trying to tighten up any sort of not loopholes, but things that people can do to to make it more complicated and avoid ambiguity. So I I think I can do that. Um.
So then the multiplier.
That's kind of.
What is the board's consensus? So is the five, is the five times to what you want, or is five times too much or too little? Or do we want to Commissioner Turnquist's opinion of making a multiplier of three?
I I understand what Commissioner Turnquist is saying, but if you have a if you can let a storefront vacant for twenty years, you can afford to pay that, because obviously you don't need the money. And that's what we're running into. I I've I've contacted uh, several of the owners and said, look, I got somebody wants your building. They want to, nah, I don't think I want to do that. Uh, I'm I'm good. And that's what we want to try to get away.
So can we tackle that without actually the tax, the tax rate, but by the fines and the penalties? I think that's where you can hit them to make them do something.
You you just don't want to make it too lenient. I I I agree with.
Well, I guess, and and just to be clear, the the fine as as currently written, that only applies to violations of the ordinance. Okay, so your maintenance, so essentially
So you get to find.
A fine would would occur if someone didn't register, someone didn't update their registration, someone isn't complying with the maintenance standards, okay? But that wouldn't address the just holding it. The the, yeah.
Understood.
Right?
I was looking at taking that, that's the fine part and making them do something because they're being fined. The tax rate is totally separate from what we're, I think, what we're trying to do here. Maybe I'm wrong. I've just come into this last month, so I'm trying to catch up on everything. So I I think two can work hand in hand. I I I mean, that that's what I would like to see, but I don't know if that's feasible. I think it is.
So here, here's my question on, let's assume I got my building, it's immaculate. I'm spending five thousand dollars a month in maintenance and keeping it up and looking at pretty, but it's vacant. What you're 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 proposing a fine for?
No, no, only for the abandoned, abandoned, abandoned.
Right, but nobody's in the building. I'm I'm maintaining it.
But you're maintaining all the requirements, so there is no fine for any of that.
Right, but we also don't want it to be vacant. So how do we get it from being vacant?
That's for the tax rate. The tax rate is after that, but there's a point where you can do both. When one is dilapidated, falling apart.
Oh, no, I agree. You can hit them with both at the same time. Okay, I thought you were saying, okay.
No, no, no. I wasn't trying to eliminate one or add one.
Okay.
I think we could work this into a, you know, an adhesion of both.
And and they're currently, that that's how it's written. I I think it really is just a matter of how how steep do you want to make both the fines and the tax increases? I I think that, I I think you need both. It's a matter of how how much.
Right. Like, can we table this for thirty days to the next meeting so we could all come up with fines?
Yeah, I mean, I need, I need to make adjustments anyway.
He needs, he needs some direction for us of what we're trying to.
Yeah, so as of right now, what I have is for the hardships, I'm going to tighten up the time limits. Anything else you need from me? I mean, I don't need, I don't need to know what you want to do on the um, the the tax rates. I think that's something that you can figure out up on the dais when you vote for this, right? I I don't, I don't need to make that change. If you know, you, I can do it, but um, is there anything else? is there anything else that you want me to do?
Do you need information from us in the direction for the fines? Or does that fall under the tax rate also?
No. So if, if you know, if, if you know what you want it to say, you can tell me. Right. Yeah, that, that's my point is I, I, the, the numbers themselves, I think are for you to decide. And if, unless you want me to come back with, and it's probably going to be more staff, because that's less of a legal question, you know, for information on what those numbers should be. That's, but.
But there is no limit on the fine, how we do that. Is it, is it set by Maryland that you can only go so high?
Correct. Per, per violation, you can't have an excess of a $5,000 fine. Yeah.
So, but can you say 30 days in, they haven't done anything, we send them the fine for, say, the, the half a percent of a $200,000 piece of property, that would be $1,000. So the next month, we do another, he hasn't done anything, we give another, uh, fine. This time it's 1%, which is now more, $2,000. Can we do in increments?
You can do it. Yeah, no, you, you, so you can certainly do increments. My, my hesitation with your percentage idea is, and again, I'm not going to do math, but if there would ever be a situation where your percentage would exceed the $5,000 threshold, I mean, you could have a five, you could just say percent, 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 $5,000 hard cap. I guess you could do it that way.
So you wanted to change the fine, because right now it's for $500 for each day. But I know you, you thought, but that was going to be changed to 500.
Call it 500 per violation or.
So how long is the violation?
Well, you, you tell me.
30 days to correct it? Is that how we would do it?
But after that 30 days, are you saying it's capped? This is just example, after 30 days, it's not repaired. Is it then, currently we'd say $500 a day until it is repaired?
Okay, then we would add the additional fine.
Because, because the way, the way, the way, and the way we tend to be is that it's $500 for each fine. So if it's 30.
Each day is a fun separate fine.
But it may be a 30 day period instead of being a one day period. It's a 30 day period. Am I saying that right, Clark?
Yes.
So, so $500 on January 1st, $500 on February 1st and March 1st.
Valerie, is that what you were saying or were you?
No, I would say the currently, my understanding is $500 a day. So we give them, we notify, you're deficient. You have some maintenance thing you haven't done. So you have 30 days to fix it. Day 31, you get $500. Day 32, you get another $500. Day 33, you get another $500.
That, that is in fact, that's how it's currently written in front of you. But as I said, I, I, we, I, we've kind of had this conversation before with this and other ordinances. And so what I meant to do, again, it didn't carry over, was to make it more limited than that, to not be 31, 32, 33, 34, 500, 500, 500, 500, to make it more circumspect.
I think with the rental registration, we decided that the first offense would be a written warning. The second offense would be, I think, 250 and then it went up to 500. I mean, do we want to consider that? Here's my thing. If we find a person $500 per day over a 30 day period, that's $15,000.
Can't do that.
Yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm, I'm not advocating for that either.
But it says for every day.
I, I know, but, but as I said, I meant to make that change.
And it just comes high enough that they don't, for whatever reason, pay the fines or pay the extra property tax. What would the towns?
We put a lien on their property.
Exactly. So if the town puts a lien on the property, they can't sell it.
Sure they can.
Without satisfying the lien.
Were they satisfied by selling it?
Right, but they may not be able to satisfy the lien and get enough to pay off the property if they have a mortgage on the property. So our whole object, objective of, of proving the properties is out the window.
No. I don't think so. I mean.
You have to satisfy a lien.
He's saying we can only go to $5,000.
So, so in, in the situation that you just played out, someone incurs a significant number of fines for failure to comply with the, the violation. Those citations are converted into judgments. The judgments serve as liens on the property. You are right. If the person then goes to sell the property, they would need to satisfy those liens before and satisfy their mortgage before they got anything out of the sale. However, if those liens also would, the action would be forced because the property would then go up for tax sale. So a new buyer is going to come in and buy the property.
And they're required to pay the lien.
And they'd be required to pay the liens.
Correct.
A lien would force the tax sale.
Yes.
So then, wait a minute.
That works in itself.
If it's $500, whether it's daily, monthly, or whatever, if the $500 we got, I don't know, eight of them, and we exceed our $5,000 limit, does that violate the Maryland law?
No.
I didn't think so.
No, that, no, that's.
Each incremental.
And just to be, right. Yeah, it, it's not, it's, it's not accumulative cap.
$5,000.
Yeah. And, and just to be clear, what I'm, what I'm saying applies to any, any code enforcement violation right now. This isn't something special for this ordinance. If, if you get, get a municipal infraction, property related, you don't pay it. It gets added to your tax bill. If you don't pay your tax bill with that additional fee, which would then come to the town, the county puts it on the tax sale list. So then you either redeem it at the tax sale or it gets sold at the tax sale. So that, that's how, that wouldn't, that would not be ideal, because again, I don't think anyone wants to force a property owner out of their property. But if that's sort of the ultimate consequence here, if you don't comply with the ordinances, the property is still changing hands.
There's a dilapidated property, I guess, past the Dollar General or just before the Dollar, Dollar, I think we all know which one. Do we have a lien on that? Did we?
They've both already gone to tax sale and have been purchased.
It's been purchased.
Yes. Um, and the actual purchasers in the process of probably demoing that, um, dilapidated building and cleaning up the whole area.
How long did that take?
And they were required, they were required to pay all the liens.
How long did it take for the sale to?
So the first property went to tax sale, not this year, last year, correct? So it went to tax sale in 2024.
They do, they do it once a year in May.
In April, May?
Yeah.
May.
So es- essentially, any, any fines that are unpaid get added to, I think it even starts in, I think it, they, I think they do it on a calendar basis where they send out the tax bill with the added, you know, infraction charge leaning on it. And then if it doesn't get paid, they start the, the process and the actual sales occur once a year in May. So that's what you'd be looking at time wise.
What if we were to earmark part of the added tax revenue for Main Street business grants? So give a little carrot for businesses to upgrade the property and so it converts penalties into community benefits.
Put in it to good use. If, if we took the revenue generated by the increased taxes and developed some sort of, um, grants towards, you know, restoring Main Street or improving Main Street, things like that to kind of.
Or even part of it.
So the, so the town did, um, small business grants during COVID. So it sounds to me, it would be similar of that, that you bring the revenue in and then it would be allocated towards, um, for example, small business grants.
Sure.
Does the facade green allow for them, the businesses to use that?
Yeah, it's going to use the facade man too.
So there is a green already, already in place.
Yeah, yeah, we're not, our intention is not to get rich off of this. Our intention is to fix up the downtown. That's, that's all we're looking for. Sure not to be, you know, to, to get rich. We, we, we want to work with people and.
Could we provide? Like if the business wanted to purchase that property, could we provide them a tax break for a half a year? Or a year charge of half to get that going and develop the, the property? And is that something, I guess it's something we can look into.
The county does offer something similar to that as well.
And the town could piggyback onto that or not?
I, I think so. I think that's kind of what Commissioner Turnquist was talking about doing. I, I, I like that idea.
Yeah, I like that too. We can provide a tax break to develop.
Okay. Does anyone have any additional things they would like me to do? Again, I, I think that they get, the rates are for you folks to decide, but in addition to time limits on hardship exemptions and making it clear in 1817.100 that we're not doing the day 31, day 32, day 33, $500 situation. Any, anything else you would like me to do?
I think we were going to define what the conditions were.
Yeah, that, I was lumping that in with the, the time limit piece. Yeah.
All right. Anything else? Did I give you enough?
I know what I'm doing.
For the next go around? Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Clark.
So then I guess what we need here, uh, is a motion to table?
Yes.
All right. Do we have a motion to table agenda number seven?
Yes.
I have some move second.
Motion is second to table agenda number seven for additional amendments. Do we have any discussions on that? All those in favor of the motion?
All right.
I.
I. Many oppose? All right. Last agenda item is to set agenda items for our next meeting on Tuesday, December the 2nd.
Right. I have several items. Under administrative business, uh, number one would be for consideration, approval of free metered holiday parking from December 5th, 2025 through January 3rd, 2026, with all proceeds going to the Emmitsburg Food Bank. Number two, review of solar and electric expenses for the town. Yes. Moving on to consent, I have for consideration, approval of proclamation renaming the dedicated 531 acres of the Ski Liberty Mountain to the Dawn and Libby Briggs Family and Recreation Preserve. Number two, for consideration, approval of proclamation celebrating the 200 anniversary of the incorporation of the town of Emmitsburg. Number three would be for consideration, reappoint Diane Walbrecker to the Board of Appeals with a term of December 15th, 2025 through December 15th of 2028. Next one for consideration, reappoint Jack Pollitt as an alternate on the Board of Appeals with a term of October 1, 2025 through October 1 of 2028. The next one would be for consideration, reappoint Shannon Cool to the Parks and Rec Committee with a term of December 2nd, 2025 to December 2nd, 2027. Number six for consideration, reappoint Steve Start, Stephen Starlipper to the Parks and Rec uh, committee with a term of December 2nd, 2025 to December 2nd, 2027. And finally, for consideration, reappoint Amanda Ryder to the Parks and Rec Committee with a term of December 2nd, 2025 to December 2nd, 2027.
Did you say Parks and Rec?
Yes.
Okay.
Agenda items. Number one, a presentation from retail strategies on small budget, big impact downtown revitalization. Number two, for consideration, approval of bid for the pool management contract for the 2026 through 2028 pool seasons. Number three, for consideration, approval of bid for sewer relining services for 2026 through 2028. And then, um, I put back on for consideration, approval of 2025 dash 15 ordinance, uh, which establishes a vacant property tax and registration program in the town of Emmitsburg.
I'm sorry, can we move that to January since Jim will not be here for the next meeting?
It's up to you guys.
I'd like this, I mean, I would like to have a full board for that, in case it's a two, two, and then it would fail.
That's the, totally, that's the, that's the board decision. It's not mine.
Jim?
Or, you know, staff would be very amendable. That can make December very short meeting.
Yeah, that would be nice. You could do.
All right. I will hold those off to January then.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Oh, I didn't put that on here.
Um, for January, for January, can we add, um, student housing, so we can look at that ordinance and clarify the questions that have come up. It's very, it's very confusing and it's not clear. I want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Trying to do an amendment to it? Is that what we're looking at or just reviewing it? You can review it when you're out.
Go ahead.
December's meeting first.
Okay.
Are you putting the community garden on for December? So what, what's the title, what's the agenda title?
So the mayor said, the mayor announced the workshop that he had, he, he was already working on a, what you call it, a, um,
guideline.
Guideline, thank you.
And you all were supposed to have your stuff to me tonight, right?
By the day.
Right.
Yes, today was the deadline for that.
Does everybody have their homework in?
Yes. I got all mine in.
I did.
I know you, you were first. Yeah, you got it.
I called mine in also.
So we're looking for, um, for discussion and consideration, rules, guidelines.
Rules and guidelines for community garden.
For December.
Yes.
All right. So I have the four items for December then.
So you do have a short meeting. Maybe, maybe.
Okay, that's all I have.
All right. Does anybody wish for anything else when that, when that meeting for December?
No.
All right. All those in favor of, of the, of the agenda for December? Or is there a motion for it? All those in favor? Commissioner Turnquist, you wanted to talk about something you wanted to bring up in January?
Yeah, can we put, um, I don't, did I say rental registration? If I did, I meant student housing. I don't know what I said, but can we discuss the ordinance for student housing? Because there's.
You want clarity?
I want clarity.
I'll make the recommendation that we bring Clark back in, uh, January to have.
Valerie, could you just write down the things that you have? I mean, circle, whatever.
I attempted to do that, but I did not get satisfactory answers. So I think we should, I think we should discuss it as a council to, so we all know. Because the last time we brought this up, the, um, the board was split. Some thought that this applied and others thought that this didn't apply. So there was already confusion amongst the board of what the, um, criteria was or wasn't.
It's fine with me.
So when you set the agenda, I don't have, I don't have for, for Clark or whoever to come and bring, answer questions or clarification to resolve what it actually is. Regardless of whether, whether we agree with it or not, it's another story, but, but actually what, what is it legally or whatever?
Yeah. So, I mean, somebody can be there. I mean, I'll, I'll be honest, I haven't spent as much time on the student housing as Ms. Powell has. And I wasn't at the hearing in question. So I'd speak to it tonight if I'd been at those two things, but either I'll get up to speed or Ms. Powell will be here. So again, if there are, and I don't, and I'm not sure if they were sent to us or not, or, or what you're referring to, but if there are specific issues that you want discussed, clarified, having them in advance will always be good.
Yeah, we need to settle it because no doubt in the future, there will be another exception request and we need to know what the policy actually means. Or how it's interpreted, or we just need to be on the same page.
Thank you. All right. Any, anything else for the order?
Is there something about photos?
Somebody, somebody didn't get the memo. I don't mention her names, Mayor.
Can we motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You end it. I think, I think it's nine 12.